Have to mitigate, it's a small one, but it is one we're gonna have to mitigate. We're probably going to add additional wetlands to the existing Itasca Nature Center on Spring Brook to mitigate that, that one wetland.
If I can follow up, what's the cost estimate for that site? And would there be more or less tie-in cost to that site? If you can ballpark it.
Okay, the, the costs that Itasca is facing right now is thirty-six point four million dollars for their, their whole plan. That's four MGD. Okay? You're asking about what's the cost if, if you did a joint plant there together?
Well, the extra cost that Gary was talking about, the repiping and the pumping and all the other, to transfer our load or part of our load up to that, would that be that twenty million or would that be somewhat less because of the location or more or, if you can ballpark it?
Well, first of all, you'd have, you have to build that amount of capacity at that site, so you're gonna have that same expense and that's, that's gonna be up forty million dollars, you know, five MGD, it's gonna be up in that range. And then the transport costs to get from your current locations up to that site on Prospect, that's really upstream, so you're pumping upstream rather than flowing downstream. Those are gonna be significant costs. You've got some challenges there too, because you have to cross a railroad, you have to cross Spring Brook, so there's, there's some challenges that you may not face going down to, to this site. But it's, it's certainly, that twenty million dollars Gary was just talking about was for rehabbing your existing facilities. You throw those facilities away, you don't incur that cost.
I was referring to, maybe I misunderstood, from the quote of the new plan of the forty-nine up to the sixty or eighty that Gary was quoting us.
Mr. Hulkenberg.
That had nothing to do with the upgrades of the two existing facilities, did it?
No, that we, my sixty to eighty million dollar question took, takes their fifty million dollars for the plant and another ten to thirty million dollars of, of necessary infrastructure improvements, the pumping, the conveyance, if you will.
Anything further, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Alderman Shaki?
Oh, thank you, Alderman Winger, appreciate it. I just wanna follow up on what the mayor was saying. Sometimes I get a little enthusiastic when I'm trying to help my constituents and it was just by chance that I went to the Itasca fair and ran into one of the trustees over there and was talking to him this last weekend. And he is one of the persons, he said, who kinda knocked down the idea of, of going in with Wooddale. And the reason was because of George Street, because of what I had said about George Street and, and made kind of a fuss about it. But I explained to him what my reasons were and what happened and he, I believe, understood it and, in quotes, forgave me. But what we talked about was just having the two councils, their trustees and mayor and our Alderman and mayor, perhaps getting together with a meeting with Baxter and Woodman and have some dialogue. I know there's problems going up that way. There still may be some savings to have a combined treatment plant. I know there would be problems of who would run it and so forth, but I think it would behoove us to take that chance and, and at least sit down and talk to them and maybe get some ideas going back and forth and see if there is some possibility of combining the two plants together. So I'd hate to see a decision made tonight when we can perhaps talk to them and find out about getting together within the next couple of weeks. It might be worthwhile just holding off for that. Thank you.
Alderman Luiten.
Mr. Fisher, I noticed when you showed us the, the slide presentation of the new plant, that's the proposed new plant, you showed us that it was in a floodway. You said, you didn't say floodway, but I read on the map floodway. Now, on a floodway, you can't rebuild if anything happens. Now, I realize you're not building in a floodway, but I was looking at some flood maps of the city about a month ago and I noticed that the flood zone, the floodway on Salt Creek by Irving Park was changed by FEMA. And where it used to just go over one block from, not even a block, about a half a block from Salt Creek eastward, the new map goes another four houses. So what used to be just the condominiums on Irving Park Road, First Wooddale plot, First Wooddale condos, that is now stretched past the mayor's house and all the way to envelop the residential house that's owned by Mike, the, the, the Wooddale Bowl. So that, that is an extension of a, of, how far would you say that extension is? About four houses, four blocks? I mean, not four house, four blocks, four, how many feet is I'm trying to get in?
My length is a hundred and sixty feet and I think his is eighty, so it's about two hundred and forty feet for both of those structures.
Two hundred and forty feet. To me, that's a negative for this plant because five years from now, ten years from now FEMA can say, well, we, we've discovered that the earth has changed a little bit and now that this is, this floodway has extended another same amount of feet into our water treatment plant. Now, if there's a fire or something, or, or an earthquake or something that disturbs the plant, we can't rebuild it, we can't repair it. I know we're safe today, but any, but FEMA could make a new map two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now. And I'd like to ask you, isn't that a negative for this plant? And that's my question to you.
Sure. Okay, let me, let me first address the floodway issue and the date of the FEMA map. This is the latest FEMA information. This line right here represents the floodway, okay? The second line represents the flood plain, all right? Salt Creek is right here, takes a bend, goes way out this way and up. So it, it is a very, very wide floodway and you're right, they, they have really widened out, but we have taken that into consideration and so we, we do know where that is in relation to the rest of, rest of the site. Now, as far as the site and where it is vertically in comparison to the flood plain, because of all the fill on this site, we have had to keep all of the structures high. So even if, even if this backs all the way to Addison Road, that area still is not gonna flood. That plant will be safe.
So you're estimating that this area of earth will not become part of an enlarged floodway that FEMA might change in ten years from today?
That's, that's my, that's my estimation because of where this ground is today. It is, is very high compared to the rest of the surrounding area.
And so if you had forty-two million dollars to build a plant, you'd, you'd bet on it, on no problems in the future and put it there?
On this site, on this site, I, I would not hesitate. I would not hesitate.
Thank you for your answer.
Going back to the initial intent of back in months ago, it was my understanding that we entered into this site assessment and design study to make a determination if that parcel property was feasible for our new wastewater treatment plant. Baxter and Woodman, it looks like they did their due diligence and it appears that this land is feasible for us to enter into a land swap if we wish to safeguard our future and have land available if we need, if we do need to do this new treatment plant. So I'm gonna make a motion that, that we proceed and that, that we proceed in discussions with the forest preserve and Addison on the land swap agreement with the parcels we've discussed and before those discussions, look into the additional borings, the search for endangered species, ensuring a sedimentation basin exists and not the wetland, and fourthly, ensure if any environmental remediation needs are necessary. Is there a second?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
On the question?
Question.
Alderman Wesley?
Is that, is that additional fee that we are looking at now here for you to move forward?
Yes. We have to fill our obligation under our current contract.
I understand that. My question is what will the additional charge be now for us to move forward with you on this project? Do we have a ballpark figure what that could cost?
Mr. Hulkenberg.
The way the process is set up, the way we initially did it, we recognized that this was a relatively small project with a relatively small scope. If you recall though, we went through a lot of hoops to select a consultant. We, we, we sent out qualifications, we had interviews. So the idea was that we would select our consultant and then now, as we proceed forward, we'll sit down with them, review the scope, the exact scope, and then develop costs so that we could then bring those costs back to council for approval. They might be able to give you a ballpark tonight, but, but that's the next step, that would be to sit with them and, and define the scope and negotiate those costs.
Well, my follow-up with that, could you give us a ballpark figure what it may cost?
Yeah, I, I can do that, I could, because I can share with you what we did with Itasca. And in Itasca, we prepared a facility plan. Now, now, I just heard a motion that said you wanted to look at four things. There was additional soil borings, clearing the environmental issues on the site. What were the other two?
Ensuring a sedimentation basin exists and not the wetland and to rule out endangered species.
Okay. So with those four things, if you just wanted that scope, that would be very minimal on our part, okay? But for a full-blown facility plan for Baxter and Woodman to prepare, in Itasca, that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that facility plan. Now, in addition to that, we did a rate study. We did some preliminary work on land acquisition. As I recall, that was like a forty thousand dollar budget for acquiring land from ComEd. We did some preliminary work with DuPage County Department of Development and Economic Development and Planning, the stormwater permit, I think that was about twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Let's see, there was another, another issue. It was coordination with the stakeholders in the watershed. There was some money attributed to that. So all in all, we're approaching three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Itasca.
Right, but to do what, four items that you, we are asking, it's...
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be small.
Twenty, thirty thousand?
A little bit less than that.
Okay. My question then to Gary, is it a budget item for this year to move forward with this project or is it not, or we have to do a budget amendment? I'm in favor of moving forward with the project, but my concern is the costs that could affect down the line and you guys did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I was well pleased with their performance. My question to you now, Gary, if we move forward and to do this project, is it in a budget for this year or is there gonna have to be a budget amendment on this project?
And I apologize, I don't know if it's a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand, but there is money, it's specifically in the budget for engineering for the wastewater plant. I just don't remember if it's a hundred and fifty.
But to move forward, so to allow this to go forward?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Winger?
Mr. Mayor, I want to be clear that the intent of my motion was specific to those four items. It wasn't suggesting to, to do a full-blown phase two, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing. I wasn't speaking to that, it was just the, the four items.
Right, I, I just wanna make sure, we don't, you know, you're making a motion and I agree, we should go forward. I just don't know what the price tag is and, and that's why I wanna know, are we talking fifty, sixty thousand? What, what are we talking here? And that, that was my concern. No, I agree with the motion, move forward with the project with them, they have done an outstanding job so far that they have done, I have no problem doing it. I just wanna make sure we have it in a budget item.
So follow up to, to Mr. Hulkenberg, so, so then with the four items, what's the procedure that Baxter and Woodman would come forward and give us the, the price estimate and then we would review it as a, as a council or do we set a clip level now? How would you like that to work?
The existing study that we've just completed tonight, I believe our contract with you was a little over thirty thousand, I think.
Yes, it was.
So that was for this entire study tonight. So that gives you hopefully a magnitude of scope. If it was just these four items, it'll be a smaller scope, more defined scope. The, the process ideally would be that we could sit with them, you know, get the scope defined, get the cost defined, come back to council then for your, for your approval. It would be up to you if you wanted to say a, a level, set a ceiling tonight, that'd be your, your choice, but I'd rather come back to you with that cost for your approval.
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Yes.
That passes. Before we move on to the next item, I was just in discussion with the city manager. He had a discussion with the city manager of Itasca, that might prove valuable to share that with everybody.
In anticipation of tonight's meeting, I did contact Dave Williams of Itasca and I asked him if there was any intent again to revisit the idea of doing a joint project. What he told me was he had no idea it would have to come from his council. However, he, if we were interested, all's I would have to do is give him a call and he could place that on the agenda for their Tuesday meeting to see what the interest of the council was.
So is there consensus we should pursue that option, to make that discussion? Alderman Police?
When Mr. Fisher was answering your question about the cost, Itasca's doing four million gallons a day and we would have to put our five million gallons a day there, so our forty-five million would still be there. And then we'd have to, I understand, we'd, if you have two cities, two municipalities joining together, you'd have to create some kind of sanitary district or something like that?
That's one option. I mean, you can do an intergovernmental agreement. One, you, you can simply, one of the two communities can be the customer, a big customer, but one customer of that community. Or you can put the, the treatment plant under a totally new governmental agency, a water reclamation district.
But our cost is basically the same and, and now, and now we're partnering. It's not like, you didn't come out, it sounded like we pretty much were gonna pay the same. We might save a little bit in the pumping stations and moving the water to the plant.
Well, well, there's some economies of scale. For example, if you were to build two separate plants, you have two separate administration buildings, two separate laboratories, two separate offices, sets of offices for your personnel. So with one, obviously you only have one of each of those. So there are some economies of scale. You know, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't expect it to be ninety million dollars, but I don't expect it to be fifty million dollars either, so it's, it's gonna be somewhere in that range.
Thank you.
I will interpret that as consensus for staff to proceed.
Yes, I...
With preliminary discussions.
I recommend that we, we send them, I mean, it won't hurt, see where they stand for a final time. I mean, if they say no, then it's done. I mean, then we pursue more further into ours.
Very good. Item two?
Next item on our agenda is the two thousand six street improvements project pay estimate number eight. I realize that there are some concerns on, on behalf of some of the council, so perhaps we should have a little discussion before we go into the motion. With that, Mr. Hulkenberg, do you wanna give a summary of, of the nature of this?
Before we get into a discussion though, it's always appropriate to have a motion on the floor, sir. Is there a motion to prove, if somebody will give me that figure? What was that?
Fourteen thousand, seven hundred...
To our Dunham and Company, is there a second? Or did somebody make the motion, I should say?
Somebody made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now on the question, Mr. Hulkenberg.
Late last fall, the streets, I think the streets that are most in question are Iroquois and Montclair. Those were paved by Dunham in the fall. During the wintertime months, and I apologize, Alderman Coles, I don't know exactly when it was, but Alderman Coles first brought the concerns to me regarding the condition of, of those pavements. When spring came, we had our, our consulting engineer who was running the project, Benison Associates, out there and they concurred with Alderman Coles' observations that there was some items that needed to be looked at, some items of concern. On May second, and I was on vacation, but a meeting was held then with a representative from Benes, Dave Graff, the city engineer, and then representatives from Testing Service Corporation, and they all met out there to look at the, the roadways. Now, Testing Service Corporation is a material testing firm that's hired by the city. It's not related to the contractor, they are a complete separate engineering firm that we hire to evaluate our materials on our projects, our concrete, our asphalt. We don't usually have them do soils work, but they're, they do soils work as well. So that's who TSC is. And I have their report, basically I'll, I'll go through a couple of items in their report. They said that they did notice distress and on Montclair specifically, the, the most distress was near house number one thirty-three. The area exhibited segregation in multiple areas and had begun to ravel down to the base cores. They also said that other areas of the pavement throughout the project had shown light segregation and that this particular area though had more significant segregation. They did do pavement cores in that area and those pavement cores showed a possible issue with the compaction as well as then a, a zero point five percent deficiency in the binder content and essentially what that means, I'll put in real, real generic terms, the binder content is just what his name says, it's, it's that asphalt material that binds everything together. So all the rocks and stones, it sticks them all together. So there's, they were zero point five percent below what the content was supposed to be in that location where they saw these failures, which pavement was failing, so it's not surprising that they found results which were, which were failing. That is the area which has now been patched, that, that area was milled out and has now been patched. There were also longitudinal construction joints that had begun to separate. That was, I think, what was first brought to Alderman Coles' attention, that's I think probably the first thing that was noticed. Their recommendation, TSC, this being Testing Services Corporation's recommendation, was that the city meet with the contractor and discuss crack sealing the centerline joint. This will help reduce infiltration and help future, help reduce future separation. And as Alderman Police said, with those, have now subsequently been crack filled, those centerline joints. Then finally they go on to say, as mentioned previously, there were multiple areas of light segregation as well as uneven areas and areas along with segregation due to looting of the mix during construction. These defects, basically these defects could result, and I think I said this last time, could result in a shorter lifespan of the pavement and promote premature cracking. Therefore, they're recommending that a seal code or rejuvenation program be put in place for the, for the road, which is what we're, what we're now doing. I mean, that's, that's what you now see out there. And in fact, they began, they did two test strips on, was it Tuesday of this week? It was Tuesday of this week?
Three.
Monday, maybe, of this week.
They did three.
And those...
Test strips.
Those test strips were done to basically showcase their product to other municipalities. They were putting it out there and then, then kind of, you know, having a show and tell for municipalities. When they come back, they will be then completing out the rejuvenation on the whole, on the whole road itself. And then that's really, then they get into the core results, which I don't, I don't need to read all of, all of the individual testing reports, but that was really the, the recommendations brought forth by Testing Service after, after they've looked at it. And I guess at that point, I'll, I'll...
Can I, can I, can I talk?
Alderman Coles, before you do, Gary, would you elaborate a little more on the core sample that the compaction had failed, that didn't show proper compaction? Is that of the asphalt or the gravel base or could you expand on that a little more?
That would be of the asphalt itself, the asphalt that was placed. And again, they took core samples in the area where failures were observed. So to come up with a failing core sample isn't necessarily a, a shock because it was pretty evident the pavement was failing right there. The cores, the density test on the cores ranged from, I'm gonna find the low one, eighty-seven and a half to eighty-nine point eight percent and the, the area, or the recommended or the, I'm sorry, the required minimum is ninety-three. So if they were at eighty-seven and the required minimum was ninety-three, they were six percent below compaction in that area where they took the cores, which is the area that had failed, which is now the area that has been milled off and, and, and resurfaced.
What I'm getting at is is a problem with, you have four inches of base and then two inches of top, blacktop, whatever, is the, the base itself is what's failing or it had the compaction problem? Or is it the top surface?
It was the surface, it was the asphalt, yeah.
Alderman Coles?
They, they also took, this is the third time this core were taken out. They took out three different spaces too. And where they patched, they put different type of blacktop in there than what was original. And now this street is, ain't even a year old. And they, they cut a groove down in the middle of the street where they said, where it was cracking. They put a black strip of tar, that wide, down the middle of the street and then they started sealing it. They have three spots that they thicked because they said they didn't have the right mix. All right? They didn't have the right mix. Now, it rained yesterday and if you go down there, the street, you can see all the sand on the side of the forest preserve where the rain washed it off of the stuff that they just put down. That topping, it's all, all, who's going to do this two years from now when they re-top it again? Who's gonna pay for that? Are we gonna pay for that to have it re-topped again in two years? Now, it, it's the only street that I know of in Wooddale that has to have this topping. Central didn't have to have it, Tioga didn't have to have it, Hiawatha didn't have to have it, Dunley didn't, Dunley didn't have to have it, Montrose didn't have to have it, Stonemore over here didn't have to have it, Forest View didn't have to have it. Why all of a sudden? Because they did a poor job, we have to pay for this. I realize they're gonna pay for the first coating, but what happens two years from now? That's just like having your driveway recoded every two years. That's what's gonna have to happen on that street. And I don't care what they say about this binding or anything, I'm against a microseal it too because that falls apart. And you've got the same thing on the street. Now, the only way I can figure they can straighten the street out is to cut it down at least an inch and put a nice top, top smooth asbestos on, on, on the tar, fix it up like they did the other streets. And if that doesn't happen, two years from now, three years from now, that street's gonna be nothing but junk. And we spent two point two million dollars to have that street fixed up. And I realize everything else is pretty fair. Sidewalks are cracking, but that's, and it ain't done. And I got a letter here from Benes saying, "All the work has been completed, so they should have received their money." Well, I got people calling me at my house, I talked to her Tuesday, she says, "When am I gonna get my gas light fixed?" They dug holes and they took off. They didn't finish that. Pegg Gabor's house, she's got a piece of, if there ain't a horse that it's in there, somebody could fall in the hole that they dug out that they supposed, they supposed to put dirt in. They haven't done that either. Yesterday, they did the cement work on a cement that had to be replaced, the cracks that were in the, in the driveway of Paul's house and the sidewalk by Michael Jordan. They did that yesterday. But I don't know if we, you, we spent a lot of money on that street and on Iroquois and both of them streets should be rebuilt. I don't care, I mean, you, you, you talking to Dunham and, we, we're the ones that okayed the money. We, we okayed two and a half million dollars, two point two million dollars to fix the street right and let's get the street fixed right, as far as I'm concerned. Now, the other guy that's gotta holler at Dunham and, and we gotta holler at...